I'd like to call this meeting to order for the work session of Monday, October 26, 2020. We have a roll call. Commissioner Burris, Commissioner Burris, Commissioner Barnard.
President.
Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Carter. Vice Chairman is here. We'll have an invocation, which I will do, and a pledge allegiance by Commissioner Barnard. If you please stand. God, we come before you today to ask your guidance for the decisions that we'll make for our community. And please be with Commissioner Burris, Commissioner Jimmy Brown's wife, and Commissioner Carter. They all have health problems one way or another. Asking your name, amen.
Do you want me to pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, for the good and evil of us all.
Do you have any guest speakers, Mr. Moore?
Uh, no, sir, not that I'm aware of.
The agenda items number five will be the WWDA update by Ms. Janet Dyke. Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Poe. Today, I'm just here to present our audit to the commission. Each year, we do this when we receive our audit back from the audit company. And for the fourth year in a row, we have a clean audit, and everything has come back, and no questions were asked again this year. So we're pleased to present that audit to the commission. Also, I would like to point out, if I knew a boat ramp would get this many people to our meetings, I would have put this on the WWDA's agenda quite some time ago. But also, just want to let you know that we're coming up to a conclusion on our One Georgia grant that we applied for, and that was a $500,000 grant that we matched loss funds with. If you'll remember, we had a prospect that was interested in that site. The prospect would have come had we had the needed infrastructure on the site and ready to go. We did not, so we missed out on a $15 million prospect because of that. When that occurred, our development authorities saw the need to go ahead and improve that water and sewer infrastructure. We now have that in place and are working to conclude that project. So that's a million dollars' worth of improvements that are going there on the corner of Scapa Road and the industrial park. Things are plugging along. We're in the final stages for a couple of prospects and hope to hear within the next week or two how things are going with at least one of those, if not two, and have some other things coming down the pipeline as well. So it's pretty exciting for the authority.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
You do an excellent job.
Thank you, sir. I'll leave the audit with the county manager.
With Scott. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is an agreement to maintain a boat ramp on Highway 158 of Satilla River. Representative James Burchett is with us today. I know he's been working close with Captain Bert Deener on this project.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
Would you like to tell us what's going on?
Yes, sir. Thanks for having me today and hearing me today. Got a phone call from Bert regarding the boat ramp and essentially just reached out to some folks in the community. We had already had some work done. A lot of folks signed on to a petition to try and get this boat ramp put in. We've secured at least a holding spot for getting this boat ramp put in. But one of the first things we have to do is get an agreement by the county to maintain the boat ramp. And I understand that with COVID in 2020 being what it has been, there's some apprehension based on not having the manpower to maintain that, which would be trash pickup and possibly, excuse me, maintenance of the grass. So I just came up here to advocate for the boat ramp. It's a, I think it's a great project. Anytime we can get the state to put in at no cost to the county for the construction, a boat ramp that, for a lot of these guys and for myself, it's one of the only outlets we have now in these crazy times to get down there on the river and do some fishing. I think we're in desperate need of a boat ramp. We've only got one now in Jamestown, and this is going to be a great asset for our community, an opportunity for these guys to get out there on the river at no cost to the county for construction. I do realize there is going to be some maintenance costs, so I'm just asking the commission to please consider the maintenance agreement. And I've spoken with both the sheriff and Department of Corrections. I know that you haven't had your details out, and that probably is some cause for concern. But again, they're dealing with COVID just like we are. I don't, I can't give you a date as to when the details will be back out, but I am telling you they're coming. And for a long-term project such as this, I think this short-term issue we're having with COVID shouldn't hold up that progress. So I'm just respectfully asking for you guys to please consider this maintenance agreement. And with that, I'll open it to questions or leave it with you, and I appreciate you again.
I thank, of course, if you see, we've got three chairmen and two other, two commissioners who are not here because of health problems. But Commissioner Barnard and I have spoken to other three members, and support is there for the boat ramp. And it would probably be taken up our next meeting, the ninth.
Yes, sir.
November 9th, and we will can vote on it and formalize the agreement. But I'd like to bring up something else. When I was on the board 20-something years ago, we attempted to, and I'd like to look at it again, a boat ramp on the Blackshear Highway. I know that DOT is going to be using local funds to rebuild the bridge, and I've seen them surveying already, doing core samples. Can we, with your contacts, DNR and DOT, can we think about putting that in as, on this project and maybe end up with a boat ramp on the Blackshear?
I would say, I already committed to you, and I will commit to you again, to push for a boat ramp on Blackshear Highway. And I'd also like to add one in Millwood on Duncan Bridge Road.
Right.
I don't think we can put it in on this project because this one's so far along.
For the future.
But I will commit to you that I will advocate for a boat ramp both on Blackshear Highway and on Duncan Bridge.
And on US 1, too.
US 1?
Yeah. You just drive off of US 4 down to the river. Don't DOT end up laying down there to put a boat ramp?
I don't know the answer to that, Commissioner.
Sure it is.
Well, the reason I bring Duncan Bridge up is because that the petition that was signed was signed in the name of both a 158 and a Duncan Bridge.
Right.
So there's some support for that. If you take 150, if, since we don't have 158, the only way to access the river there is via private boat ramp or go all the way to Jamestown. So there's one in Axon County just north of the line, or excuse me, just west of the line. I, whatever you guys want me to advocate for, I will. I think the more we, the more the merrier, in my opinion.
I think so. I think that this board will support any boat ramp on the river. There's a lot of people that do more than fish. So if we could do that for the future with, but this one is at hand, so we'll get this one and then move forward.
I certainly will push for whatever you guys would like and whatever the community would support. It's, you know, you got kayaking. And another thing that I wanted to bring up with the maintenance, we have the details, of course. And then certainly, the county could contract for maintenance, picking up trash. But also, you have the Satilla River Group. They often do cleanups on the river. You also have the Boy Scouts of America that would consider doing a cleanup. So we have avenues that, and I know we need to plan for a routine cleanup, but we have other avenues outside of just paying for it to be able to help maintain these things, you know. And in speaking with Bert and DNR, this is going to be a very nice boat ramp considering what we've had here in the past. And I think it's going to be a great long-term project for the community, Ware County and everybody. So I appreciate you guys supporting it, and I thank you for supporting it. I wish we had more commissioners here tonight, but I know it's a rough time for everybody. Again, I'll push, I'll commit again to pushing for these other projects. And I know Bert is very supportive of this ramp. He's been, you know, trying to get a ramp for many years, so he's got an itchy trigger finger, so to speak. So again, I appreciate any support you'll offer, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. I thought we have Mr. Wilton Deloach from the Satilla Riverkeeper Association. Wilton, if you could come up and give us your stand on this recommendation?
Yes, sir. I appreciate you letting me speak. I thought Laura Early was going to be here, a Riverkeeper, but apparently she didn't make it. So anyhow, I would like to say that Satilla Riverkeeper is very much in favor of the boat ramp to go in. And we're also, as you mentioned about the one on the Blackshear Highway, we met with Bert Deener and a couple of other DOT representatives early on before the project ever, any ground was broken or anything had been done to see if we could possibly get that boat ramp put back in. Because of the width of the highway, DOT said its present location really isn't feasible. We looked at some other areas, went down through the City Way Cross Treatment Plant, looked at possible access down in that area. We probably looked at three or four different sites. Nothing was actually agreed to, but Satilla Riverkeeper is very much in favor of both of those ramps. And also, like James said, we do have cleanups periodically throughout the year, and that is one of them that's always on our radar. So, and it will continue to be. So we will definitely support. It's not like something we'll do weekly or monthly, but we do have periodic cleanups, and that is one that will be on our list of cleaning up.
Sounds good. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anybody else like to speak to this? Would you?
So I didn't hear everything that Wilton just said, but I'm probably going to restate what he said. My name is Laura Early. I'm the Satilla Riverkeeper. I just wanted to come by today and let y'all know that we definitely support having a public landing, public boat ramp at Highway 158 on the Satilla River. And one of the reasons, I'm not sure if Wilton was just talking about this, but that site has been used for decades, and probably everyone knows that. And when you don't have a dedicated boat ramp area, traffic spreads out, and you can have an increased impact on the bank, so more erosion, more degradation of the habitat in that area, because everyone picks their favorite spot to put in the river. So having a dedicated boat ramp in that area would be helpful in terms of also protecting the river, the river. And I think Wilton was saying this as I walked in, that we do, sorry, I'm out of breath and wearing a mask. But yeah, we do periodic cleanups. We do one riverline cleanup every year, and that's where we organize volunteers at multiple sites across the watershed and do one huge sweep. And so we'd definitely be willing to help out by sending volunteers to that landing that one time a year, but then we also work with volunteers throughout the year. So however y'all need our help, we'd be happy to talk about how we can support that. Another thing, and I'm not sure if this is in your plans or in your consideration or not, but we found that the public boat ramps that have trash cans and dedicated trash service, it significantly reduces the amount of littering and dumping you see in that area. So if that's something that the county might be able to handle, having trash cans on site and then have someone that is able to go empty them, or if it's something that you can work into your waste disposal contracts, your curbside contracts, that's what Brantley County does at some of its landings, and that's worked out really well. So that's another thing to consider. Another thing I wanted to mention was that Ware County has two public boat ramps that are part of the Satilla River Water Trail, Jamestown Landing and Highway 84 where it crosses the Satilla. And Jamestown is actually the furthest upriver landing we have as part of the Satilla River Water Trail. So we could also talk about extending the water trail if we do get, if y'all are willing to help get a public boat ramp at 158, and then that would be extending that water trail project. And the water trail project, I'm not sure if y'all are familiar with it, but Waycross Tourism has helped support that project to help bring ecotourism to the area, but also provide resources for locals that want to access the river on public landing spots. So I think that pretty much summarized the comments that I had for y'all. I have Satilla River Water Trail maps with me if anyone wants one of those, and I also have a written letter if anyone wants that as well. Yeah. And I'd be happy to answer questions.
I assure you, this board is interested in working with the Riverkeeper Association.
Okay, great. I'd be happy to.
Thank you.
Would y'all like a copy of this?
Sure. Any other comments? Mr. Tatum?
Commissioner, thank you for your time, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I serve as the Ware County Chapter of Georgia Hunting, Fish and Federation, which is a group that was founded many, many years ago when they attempted to ban hunting in many aspects. That organization has grown to represent both hunters and fishermen. They work strongly with the legislature in Atlanta to get laws passed or to ward laws so that hunters are not impacted or fishermen are not impacted, as well as the limits, game laws and everything. Part of the Georgia Hunting, Fish and Federation is, we support that. The county adopted, and I'm in this agreement, to provide a upper river landing for Ware County. So that's not only going to serve Ware County residents, but many county residents.
Right.
We have a lot of folks locally that make business off of selling crickets and lures and several new companies have sprang up lately. Satilla River is known well for the red breast fishing as much as the swamp is for the warmouths. We urge you to follow suit and continue to support it through the next election and get it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any other comments? Thank y'all for speaking. This board recognizes that Satilla River is a valuable resource to our community from the headwaters down to the ocean, so we'll do anything we can do on our part to maintain that river. So, Mr. Moore, can we have that on our next agenda whenever, probably November 9th?
Yes, sir. I was going, well, I was going to mention, if time is of essence, with what we need to do on our end with DNR, that we could have a call meeting as soon as we can check whatever. A call meeting between now and November the 9th, because that's still a couple of weeks away.
Our next meeting, whenever?
Would be November the 9th, yes.
We have it.
Yep. If we can't pull together a call meeting before then.
Okay. Okay. We'll move on on our agenda. The next is a change order with Georgia Asphalt Producers for street resurfacing. Can you explain that, Mr. Moore?
Yes, sir. There's three streets that we've targeted to resurface, one being George Street from Mary Street to Carswell Avenue, Gorman Road from Albany Avenue to Cherokee Drive, and East Blackshear Avenue from Monroe Street to Darling Avenue. We have an existing contract now with Georgia Asphalt Producers, and these would be added to that. It's L-MIG, the 2020 L-MIG part of that contract. It's a change order in the amount of $277,028.68. These are, as most folks know, these three streets badly need to be resurfaced, and it would get us a way of getting this, these streets resurfaced quickly because they can start this week, but I know we can't act on it today. But it's possible that we might be able to have a call meeting to get this done, to push it on through, but it's up to the commission.
Yeah, this is important step here, save us, give them money.
Yes, sir. George Street is really bad off. It's, you know, really needs to be resurfaced.
So we'll have that on the next agenda whenever we have it?
Yes, sir.
The next is a ward proposal for CDBG Engineering.
Yes, sir. Part of the requirement to apply for CDBG, because it's federal funds, is we have to procure an engineering company to do the design. We have to do this by advertising and ranking proposals. We've had a committee of Michael Brooks, Brandon Wallace, and Gene Thomas to do that. They're attached to your packet there. This is a requirement from DCA that we do this, and based on what we've, what the results come back at, staff is recommending that the award proposal go to TR Long Engineering for the 2021 CDBG project. This is the, I believe, it's the road, the street paving in the Wayhoma area. Brandon, do you remember what streets they were right offhand?
Emerson Park.
Yeah. I think there's four streets, four or five streets that we're looking at, that dirt road paving.
And this grant will go a long way toward helping pay for it.
Yes, sir. It'd be a $750,000 grant. It's a competitive type of grant situation, so every little thing helps to get points for this. It's an application that's due in April, I believe it's April 1st of next year, but there's a lot of work that goes behind putting these grant applications together, so this is a way for us to get started. One of the things is there's a preliminary engineering report that has to be done to go with the grant application to show that we have means and the idea on what we're looking at doing, and it is street, dirt street paving.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Staff recommends awarding the engineering services contract to TR Long?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Nick, put that on, put that on our next agenda?
Yep. I'll put all these together for our next, if we can have a call meeting, we can come back and do that to get it approved.
Next item is a hazard mitigation grant award acceptance.
Yes, sir. I might, I would ask if Jonathan wants to speak to this. He knows much more about this, but this is something that we do, I believe, every year, if I'm not mistaken, to update that mitigate, hazard mitigation plan that we have.
Thank you, Commissioners. This is a, the hazard mitigation plan is a five-year plan that we update every five years. This is a grant that's being given to the county to fulfill that planning piece with FEMA dollars, and this particular plan is the plan that we have in place that helps us to be able to get FEMA dollars during disasters. So without the plan, we're not able to get those FEMA dollars when we have disasters for our county, whether it's streets or drainage or roads or whatever it may be. So actually, the acceptance of it will give us the opportunity to start working on the plan. It takes about a year and a half to actually do the plan, but the completion of the plan has to be done by 2023. So accepting this with the grant money, then that will allow us to start working toward the plan process.
So there's other monies, other services that maybe would not be available unless we accept this grant, right?
That's correct, yes, sir.
And they, and the Homeland Security would, the grant would be $19,500, and we, our share is $6,500?
That's correct, yes, sir. The $6,000 is the in-kind match that we have to meet for the grant, and we will do that by attendance. People that come to our meetings, we can use the cash, their cash, any kind of service to go toward that $6,000 or so.
Got you.
Providing that, all the planning partners come to our meeting, we should be able to meet the $6,000 without having any money.
Any outgoing.
Any outgoing money of the county.
Okay.
It should be 100% funded.
So what would this money be spent on?
The money is spent on someone writing the plan for the hazardous mitigation plan. Typically, we use the RDC, Southeast Georgia RDC, to do the plan and to write the plan for us. It's a huge document, some four or 500 pages in that.
Can you do it?
No, sir. I'm not qualified to do it.
Come on.
It has to, the plan has to be approved by, of course, GMA, and it has to be approved by FEMA. So it has to be done by somebody that's qualified to do it.
Okay. Next agenda, Mr. Moore?
That's it with what we have on the agenda. The only thing would be is the call meeting we have, so we can, we can, I'll see if we can schedule a call meeting to put all this on.
Open the floor up. Anybody have anything to address or comments? Commissioner Adams, I hope that our fellow misters all get well and come back to work, particularly Shep Brown's wife and Bert Carter. And downstairs is voting. Encourage everybody to vote. Anything?
I just hate that we can't get the votes. I don't want a boat ramp in this county. Yes, that's how we get handled.
Would there be any way that y'all two could make, maybe Thursday morning? Would that work? Give you enough time or sometime toward the end of the week if you want to do it then?
Yeah, just let me know. I can make arrangements to be here.
Okay. And I'll check with the others and see what we can get.
Okay. Any items, Mr. Manager, for you?
I don't have anything, no, sir.
Madam Attorney?
No, sir.
Okay, that ends the meeting, and the four o'clock call meeting will not take place, right?
Correct. That's correct.
Okay. Thanks, everybody, for coming. We're adjourned.